All right, shall we call this meeting to order? All right, we're here for the City Council Committee of the Home Meeting of September 26, 2022. The Clerk will call the roll, please.
Brad Burton.
Rip, are you here?
Here.
Thank you.
Slurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
I'm here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, right on time, thank you. And under public comment this evening, we have Mike Chamberlain with us and we have members in the audience from Sister Cities, welcome. Mike, would you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
I believe you all have copy of our latest newsletter. We just want to, on a real regular basis, share the things that we've been doing in the community in this last year. We've gotten involved in some things we hadn't done before, the barbecue cook-off, and it's our first year to participate in the parade hometown. And it's been a riot, a riot. We had a lot of fun participating in those events. At your places this evening, I placed a letter from all of us, and these are our board members here. Thank you so much for coming, all of you. And we wanted to take this opportunity to have a visit with you. And Sister Cities and City of Belvedere have been together for a long time. Our first Sister City agreement was your dad signed in 1985? Or was it your dad, or was it? No, it was, um... Was it Rory in 85? And then your dad with Voli Penne in 99. So it was 14 years span, and we got another Sister City. We've enjoyed having them visit here, and we've had the opportunity to visit there and enjoy their hospitality. This, a year from last, well, this month still, September of 2023, it's our turn to host the Tri-City Reunion Rendezvous. And we did that in 2013, and it was, it went very well. And they have always been well-received. A lot of you may remember different times they've sent one of their youth organizations, like their band, here and have had concerts at the Civic Center, and we've had them here on the council. And we're here to ask you help. Our funding, you know, comes primarily from our membership, and we don't do a lot of fundraising activities, and we're going to start doing a lot more of those. And in 2013, the city helped to underwrite some of the expense that we incurred here when they came to visit. Typically, when we go there, they put us up in their houses, and they have their events, and they make sure everybody gets fed and everybody has a place to stay. And when they come here, we do the same thing. And so as we get a little better understanding of what we are going to incur as expense, we'll come back and hopefully get a spot on the agenda, and we'll share with you what we think we're going to be short to be able to cover all the expenses that we need to do. I will share with you that, and Brad, did you want to come up and do that, or?
Oh, I can say a couple words.
Okay. Brad has a little more experience with all of this than I do, and he can share with you some of the costs that we have asked the city for before. Thank you for letting us come and visit tonight. We'd like to do this on a more regular basis and keep you abreast of the things that we're doing. And we would extend a warm invitation to all of you. We'd love to have you as members of Sister City. Wendy's a member, Dan's a member, the mayor is a member, and we'd love to have all of you as members of Sister City.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is Mike on?
He is.
Very good. Thank you for, just let me share a few things about the little bit of the history of our club. We're coming up 37 years with our relationship with Schweberding in Germany. Thirty-seven years is a long time for, I don't know if anybody's been on the council back that far, but some of our community leaders put this Sister City organization together, Bill Wolf, Ted Cowan, Wally Wested, some of those names from the past, they're all departed now. But 37 years, and then during the course of that time, we're coming up 22 or 23 years with Voli Penne. Of course, not only are we a Sister City of both Schweberding and Voli Penne, but they are Sister Cities to each other also, as well as us, so we have the triangular relationship, which is unique. When we first became a Sister City with Schweberding in Germany, Rory Peterson was the mayor here in Belvedere, and he, with a couple council people, joined our group and went to Schweberdingen to sign the papers where the city sanctioned the Sister City program with Schweberdingen. When we became a Sister City with Voli Penne, the city sponsored Fred Brerden, and I believe the city picked up his expenses to go to Voli Penne when we became Sister City with that city. So that's some of the thing in the past. Graciously, the Sister, or the city council has supported us. They paid our annual membership for the City Sisters International. We did have a little mix-up the last couple of years, and hopefully we are asking to get back on track where the city would pick up our international dues again. We are, we did, were able to come up with the money to pay for July 1st to July 1st of '23, but they'll be due again in '23. That's based on the size of the community. A little history on the Sister City International. Each year, they have a young artist contest, and we've had international winners twice, where we've sent there the top three artworks from here that go to Washington, D.C., and one of our young people placed third one year and second one year, and his artwork traveled around the country, that type of thing. Well, we sent the artwork out this year to the International. That's where we became aware that the dues were in arrears, and unfortunately, they were unable to accept them because we weren't members of the International, so it was a little embarrassment on our part. But hopefully, we can get over those stumbling blocks. But when we, twice or three times that we've had the groups here, we've had the band during the Oktoberfest, we've had, just the most recent group that came was the youth band from Schweberdingen, and we sponsored that. But the last time we had a Tri-City rendezvous here in Belvedere, the city supported us, and as Mike had said, we were planning on having that again in September '23. And we'll be putting a budget together with our expenses and that type of thing. But the city has been very supportive, and we appreciate that, and we're looking for a long, continued relationship. So I won't keep any more of your time, so we appreciate your understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. And thank you to the Board of Sister Cities for coming here this evening. Some of you I have met, so it's good to see you again. I actually was probably one of the few individuals that was on the council at the time when Mayor Peterson, back in '95 or '93, whatever it was, when Mayor Peterson actually made the trip. And then I know subsequently Mayor Burton had also made a trip over to Schweberdingen, and I, but I did have a chance to meet two exchange students from Voli Penne about a month ago, and did welcome them here to City Hall. We'd had our pictures taken in front of the mural here at City Hall, and I think Chris, I think it was Chris, maybe? Is that? Chris? Chris Meeks? So Chris Meeks was here as well. We had a nice conversation, really good, really nice students. And so I am familiar with it to that extent, and I appreciate you coming here this evening. And if you get us the information, that would be good. So thank you very much again, and we will continue to move on our agenda. Under public forum, we have no, nothing under public forum. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, public safety unfinished business, we have none. Public safety new business, Police Department update, Chief Woody, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, council. So since my last update last month, the Police Department will be conducting two lateral interviews on this Thursday for lateral applicants. And subsequent to that, October 4th, next Tuesday, Police Department Command Staff will be meeting with the Fire and Police Commission to present the results of those lateral applicants, as well as finalize the entry level list, which currently consists of five applicants. We did hire Officer Matthew Davis on September 6th, and he came to us as a lateral from Rockford. We just had two officers attend and graduate from Accident Reconstructionist training. It's a multi-month training, nine weeks in total, a great deal of studying, education that consists in those nine weeks. And now that they are certified as Accident Reconstructionists, it'll allow them to investigate fatal and near fatal traffic accidents or traffic crashes. We will, actually, our community policing program has started a new Community Policing Academy. They've been going for two weeks now. This Thursday will be the third week. They have eight weeks left, and that is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Building. And last but not least, we, the Police Department has had one more squad car engine blow on a 2016 Dodge Charger with roughly 85,000, 90,000 miles on it. No, this was not a squad car that had an extended warranty. We are looking at what our options are available to us at this point in terms of potentially replacing that vehicle. Just an update in terms of squad cars, the Police Department hasn't been able to purchase any new squad cars this fiscal year due to no inventory for the 2022 models. And then we just found out last week that the pricing came out for the Durangos, and the pricing for the 2023 Chargers does not come out until next month. And once that does, we're still looking at a eight-to-10-week delivery on those new vehicles. I'll entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Alderman Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, are we, have we considered a different car besides a Charger?
We have looked at other cars. I know the Sheriff's Department looks or uses the Ford Explorers. The Ford is an option. We do try to stay with the Dodge brand since we are a Chrysler community. What happens with that going forward remains to be seen, but, you know, we do try to purchase our vehicles through them and support them as much as we possibly can. You know, and that's one of the reasons why we ended up going with the warranties when we did. We understood that, you know, any squad car is going to have wear and tear, especially when you have multiple people driving them over, you know, sometimes several days in a row just because of the squad car availability. That just seems to be the unfortunate fact that we deal with. The county, they do have the luxury of having take-home squads. There is some, you know, data to support that take-home squads do tend to have less maintenance issues. So it's six on one hand, half a dozen on the other, because you're either going to make the investment, have all of the squad cars that ultimately will end up needing to be replaced regardless, or you have less squad cars, have more people driving them for, you know, longer times throughout the day. I do believe that the squad car warranties will mitigate some of these issues that we have been having, the squad cars that have been having blown engines, our squad cars that are older models that we, you know, had intended to rotate out of the fleet regardless. You know, as luck and timing would have it, is it possible that this would have been one of those squad cars that we rotated out if we were able to get new squad cars that were approved in this fiscal year's budget? It's possible, but, you know, we just don't have that available to us right now.
Thank you. I just had one more. And it just, because Chief Shadle is looking to close the street, and we have the Halloween Parade coming up. I think sometime back, it was you that asked for, and I'm pretty sure we approved, the new parade Ballard, Ballard things, the concrete ones. Did we ever get those, and do we use those for the parades?
We did get them. We've had them for probably a couple of years. We're working with the Street Department and Public Works to get them installed. It, of course, just like anything else, it's never as easy as what you think it's going to be. There's some engineering or manufacturing that are going to be required in installing these, but it is something that, you know, the city and the Police Department recognized was necessary years, years ago to try and make these events more safe for not only the vehicular traffic, but the pedestrians on the sidewalks, as well as within the street. So yes, we do have those. We are still working with Public Works to get those installed.
We'd actually approved, I believe, 10 of them earlier in the year, and the Street Department had asked for, asked for 10 of them, so we do have additional ones, correct?
Yes, that is correct. It's something that we recognize, the limited number that were authorized when we originally had asked for them really wasn't going to be enough. So we're talking with Brent. We identified some other areas that would benefit from having them installed. But in the meantime, as a stopgap, you know, the Street Department has been excellent about putting the Jersey barriers out, which are those concrete barriers, which should eliminate a lot of the potential dangers that, you know, could consist within these different events.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Woody? All right. Thank you, Chief. Item 2B, Fire Department update, update, Chief Shadle.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first thing I would like to mention to everybody, I welcome the council, the mayor, and all the community to our open house on Sunday, October 2nd. It'll be from 1:00 to 4:00. We're going to display all the department's assets, and we're going to hand out safety information, do a rappelling exercise, extrication exercise, and there'll be a bounce house for the kids. There'll be some ice cream provided by Dairy Farmers of America. So it will be, hopefully, the weather cooperates. It should be a nice time, and I hope you all come to that. Last meeting, the skilled and dedicated members of the Belvedere Fire Department responded to 311 calls for service, so just under nine calls per day. Happy to report there were no major fires. We did assist with a semi-fire in I-90 with District 2. We provided aid four times, twice to District 2 and twice to Cherry Valley, and we received aid twice from District 2. 193 EMS calls, and during that time, 137 patients were transported by ambulance, averaging about four transports a day. The firefighter paramedics provided advanced life support 54 times. There was, again, it was a great, mostly safe month in Belvedere. We had one car accident with injuries and three minor car accidents. There were five gas, natural gas leak emergencies, again, related to all the drilling that they're doing for the fiber lines, so. Carbon monoxide incident, we've had power lines down three times. The guys did perform CPR twice. There were three obvious deaths, five seizures, three strokes, and nine traumas. So looking forward, just wanted to update you guys on the engine, the new engine that you guys approved the purchase for. Originally, they were saying November-ish, November, December. Now they're saying January, but I wouldn't hold my breath there either, so we'll see when that comes. The supply chain actually continues to worsen on that. It's about 30 to 36 months. If you were to order a new one, the prices continue to go up, and now, a lot of times, they're actually not even fixing the price when you order it. There'll be a price adjustment clause for the chassis, and then they'll pass on the cost of the chassis from the manufacturer, whatever that price increased. So if you're ordering something now, you're actually not even sure of the exact price. So I wanted to thank you guys for your efforts in helping us get that stock unit that is going to be hopefully here, you know, late winter, early spring. So more good news. Long Rapids Township Fire Department Board has approved the purchase of our mini-pumper. So that fire department, it's a small fire department. They serve a population of 1,000, but it's a larger area. It's going to be, it's 54 square miles. It's going to be a great asset for them. There's, it's a 16-member volunteer department. They are still working to get the financing to secure it. The sale price was 210. We did list it, so after 60, at least 60 days, I wasn't getting any leads anymore. It was listed on Facebook Marketplace, and at first it was, we were getting a lot of links, and so I listed it on Brindley Mountain. It's a listing site. It's the largest one for fire apparatus. And so there was a, any vehicles sold over 200,000, the, the listing fee is 5%. So the listing fee on that will be $10,500, so our net proceeds will be $500 short of 200,000. So, and that was, since, since then, we've been working with them for about 30 days. I haven't gotten any other additional leads or anything from that. It's, it's just such a specialty vehicle. So I think it is a really good price that they're, they're going to get on this because these things aren't available, but considering the fact that it's such a specialty vehicle and it takes just the right type of fire department to be able to utilize that, I'm happy to, hopefully, they get financing and we can bring a couple hundred thousand dollars back to your general fund. So this month, we're going to be working, company-level inspections of the multifamilies with common hallways, so that's something that the crews do in between calls. So there's actually 111 of them in Belvedere, so we'll walk through all those, make sure they have clear exits, egress, smoke detectors working, exit lights, and all those things. So we're going to do that. We also have our annual consumption drill. We do that on an annual basis where the guys do, it's essentially a fit-for-duty test. They do it in their full gear with their SCBA, and it includes seven essential tasks of firefighting. So they'll do that, and they'll breathe their air all the way down, and then they can kind of see where they're at and how they compare to other guys and things like that. And then it also assures us that they can perform all these tasks that we would anticipate them to perform if we, they had to do an interior fire attack, so. We'll also be doing extrication training, and then for EMS, we're going to be reviewing the EZIO. It's an interosseous device. It's something that if you can't get an IV, or there's some situations, like when you're doing CPR, that you actually just do it in IO. It's also called a bone drill, because it's, it's just drills right into their, right into their leg or their humerus, and it's a way to give them IV fluids and medicine when you can't start an IV. So it's something that we've actually been, we've had them for a long time. Were they there, Alderman Stevens, when you were there? Okay, so it's something that the guys do use all the time when they do CPR, so we're going to be reviewing that. On the agenda later is, is the contract, so you guys, if you do approve it, then mediation will be done. And so good to report on that, we're starting bargaining with the officers soon. I just wanted to, I'm wrapping up, I promise. I wanted to mention something about the overtime for the department, because it's, it's definitely been higher than normal. We've had three firefighters that have two work-related injuries and then a surgery for a non-work-related injury, so we had up to three firefighters off for the same time. That's caused quite a bit of overtime. One of them is returning to duty, another one's coming back to duty within a week or so, and then the other one, by the end of October, we should be back to full strength. So that should slow down. I just wanted to mention that. And then later on the agenda, we're going to talk about the OSF termination agreement, and so I'm not going to steal any of Attorney Drellis' thunder on that, so I'll let him present that to you. And that is all I have for my report. I'd definitely be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Flurry.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, can you remind me, what, what did the city pay for that mini-pumper?
So with everything, radios and everything, it was right around 230, 230,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Freeman.
Thank you again, Mayor. So Chief, when you guys get these 911 medical emergency calls from people at home, I guess, mostly, right? So do you typically get there before the ambulance?
That's a great question. So the way it's set up right now, it's set up extremely well, and we're not responding from the same location, so we're actually kind of in four separate areas of the city. So it 100% depends on where the call originates from. So the ambulances are staged at District 2 by the post office, so obviously, if we get something out of High Line, you know, they're going to get there first. But if it's anything south of that, you know, by Station 1, you know, we're going to get there first. The other ambulance is off of Logan, and so if it's right off of Bethany Drive out there, you know, the ambulance will get there first. But if it's out to Four Seasons, you know, we're going to get there first. So there is actually strategically not having them in the same location makes their four-minute response time circles cover a lot more people. So the question that, you know, it depends on where the call is located will determine. I know that one thing that I work with, the members of the Fire Department all the time is their turnout time, you know? Just, our goal is under a minute, under a minute, even at night, you know, just to really, and, and they do a really good job with that. When a call comes in and get out, we try and reduce our response time that way. But as far as who gets there first, it really depends on, on where the call is, especially like there's the medical facility right by District 2 Station. So the call's right there, they'll, they'll get there just about the time that we're getting out to Lincoln Avenue, you know? So there, since they're kind of on the outskirts, right, because they're up north and then on the outskirts, the majority of time, we get there first, but that's because we're centrally located, centrally located in the, in the town. So I would guarantee that if I pulled up the data and said, well, who gets there first, it would be us, but that's just because we're located in the heart of the city, and they're coming, those outskirts. And they are placed well, because they're at the main arteries, you know, Appleton's right there, State Street, Logan Avenue, you know? So it's, we're kind of set up to be in a really good situation the way it's situated right now.
Thank you. So I just had one more for you. So the drug cartels come out with some new fentanyl tablets. They look kind of like Skittles, and that's what they're calling them. But my question to you is, have you seen an increase? to you is, have you seen an increase or a decrease in overdoses when you get these calls?
No, I mean, that's something I report on in our morning meetings every, and you know, usually there's like one or, you know, so to answer your question directly, there hasn't seemed to be an increase or decrease as of late. I think this last week, we had one, and it, so I would, honestly, I would say it seems like that there's a little less as of late, you know, but it's all pretty random.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Shadon? All right, then Chief, you want to mention the open house again?
Yes, sir, thank you. Next on the agenda is related to the, is that what you're speaking of, Mayor? Is the request to close State Street, this is the same, you got a little map in your packet there, but this is the same type of layout that we have done for the past number of years, and so we close it on the side of the bridge closest to the fire station and then just past the fire station. And I went around and I did ask all those businesses, I asked their permission or made sure it wouldn't disrupt any of their operations, you know, for the day, Ripple Sunday is a big day for them. I said, well, you know, if you want to hand a little coupon out, and we'll pass it out and direct people over there, and, but, so I did, I did talk to them, and they were appreciative of that. They said, but no, it was okay. And I also talked to Chief Woody and Danny Anderson to ask if he had any law enforcement issues with the plan, and then Danny, because he helps with setting up the barricades and removing the globes on the State Street so that the helicopter can land there. But what I'm requesting is to close State Street at the north end of the bridge to Leonard Court on Sunday, October second, from twelve-fifteen to four-fifteen. This will provide safety for those attending the fire department open house, a place to land the medical helicopter on State Street Bridge, bless you, and provide a larger area to display the fire department assets.
Good, thank you, Chief. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Preather. Any questions regarding the motion and the second that's on the floor? Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and also Chief, I want to thank you for tonight, this afternoon, for providing assistance to somebody at a sporting event that you and I both happen to be at, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, item three, finance and personnel, unfinished business, we have none. Item four, finance and personnel, new business, finance department update, Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Morris. I have a few things to share with council tonight. The city has received about ninety-seven percent of the property taxes for the year with the remaining three percent expected in early November. Cities also received the second of two allocations as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds, of approximately one-point-seven million. These funds must be used by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. We are beginning to see some benefits of higher interest rates effective today or tomorrow. The city's six money market accounts at Blackhawk Bank will be earning interest at one-point-six-two-five percent each. Collectively, they have a balance of around one million and are currently earning interest at point-one-two percent. With regard to health insurance, we've received a verbal verification from Tim Knopf of Gallagher. There will be no overall rate increase for calendar year twenty-three. As you may recall, the city is in year two of a two-year rate lock, which would mean our overall rates will not change for a third year in a row. There will also be no increase to employees through December twenty-three with respect to VSP, which is the city's vision plan, and Tim Knopf of Gallagher and Nick Baba of Sickich will be at the October twenty-fourth Committee of the Whole Meeting to present a review of insurance activity and fiscal year twenty-two audit findings respectively.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Hanson? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I read somewhere that we're about to get another dispersment of ARPA funds from the state, and I think that, I'm thinking that I read Belvedere was going to get like a total of three million point-something when it was all said and done.
So our total ARPA funds allocated to the city was three-point-four million. We did get the first half about this time last year. Some of those funds have been earmarked for Southwest Tank and the primary clarifiers. We also did use some for the purchase of the new fire engine, and then, as I mentioned, we did get the second half this week, I think it was this week or end of last week, for the remaining one-point-seven million, and we have till the end of twenty-four to use those funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Hanson? All right. Okay, thank you, Shannon. Moving on, we have five A. As the chief had briefly mentioned, we were notified from OSF with a, a letter, and I, actually, we had met with OSF regarding their intent to terminate their assignment that they've had since, for quite some time with the city regarding their ambulatory care here. And so we have, they have sold or, they're getting out of the ambulance business, put it that way, and it appears that Elite is a company based out of Chicago that is going to take over what they had provided for the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney, and he can expound on that a little bit more.
So as the mayor said, we've had a contract, several contracts going back quite a number of years with Lifeline Ambulance, OSF Lifeline Ambulance, provide ambulance services to the city of Belvedere. Since the mid-two thousands, that has been provided under a agreement which frankly, I knew was probably not sustainable, I'm surprised it took this long, where they provided the ambulance service without any kind of reimbursement from the city whatsoever, and they simply billed residents at the Medicare rates, which is also relatively low, of course. So we've really had the best of both worlds for the last fifteen years or so, where we had two dedicated ambulances in the city of Belvedere for the city of Belvedere and another dedicated ambulance for District Two, so effectively three ambulances available, and then when one went out, they backfilled that one with ones from Rockford, so that we always had ambulances available, there's a wonderful working relationship. And going hand with that, frankly, we had the best of both worlds because our firefighters, you had mentioned earlier, who got there first, usually it's our firefighters. They can go out and stabilize and treat until the ambulance can take that patient to the hospital, our firefighters will go back to the firehouse and they're ready for the next call right away, where an ambulance is tied up in Rockford for hour and a half, two hours sometimes, by the time they deliver the patient and do the paperwork. So we've really had the best of both worlds, and unfortunately, I also knew that they were taking a loss on it, and frankly, they're losing money on that kind of program because there is no subsidy. When we went to an RFP back, and I think it was two thousand and five or two thousand and eight, we had one of the other competitors come into the office and said, nobody can do this without a six-figure subsidy, and that was back then. So as the mayor indicated, OSF Lifeline is getting out of the ambulance business. OSF has been doing that across the country for decades. We were one of only two ambulance companies that have left, the other one, I can't remember if it's in Champagne or Peoria or something like that. So the writing's been, it's been on the wall, this was going to happen for quite some time, is what I'm getting to. So they have entered into some kind of agreement with the other ambulance company. Our agreement with OSF was due to expire this April thirtieth anyway, April thirty, twenty, twenty-three. The other ambulance company that's buying the assets of OSF, it's an asset purchase, they're buying the ambulances, not the brand name necessarily, although they will still have Lifeline Ambulance on the rigs. They may or may not want to provide the service to the city. We are meeting with them next week. We've also started meeting with other ambulance companies in the region to see what kind of services they can provide, and the goal is to talk to several of them, figure out what is out there, what's available, and then probably put together some kind of an RFP, request for proposal for the council to consider, send that out, and hopefully find an ambulance company that can provide the services. The services will look different in the sense that frankly, Lifeline has a fleet of ambulances they can backfill all the time. That will probably change to some extent. The city will probably have more frankly, input in the day-to-day operations of the ambulance service than we do now, so from that perspective, it's probably a plus. But we can't tell you exactly how it's going to look yet, because we haven't talked to all those ambulance companies yet, and we'd like to do that so we can come back to you with recommendations and an RFP. What I can tell you right now is that the, currently, the obligation to provide ambulance services to the city of Belvedere by OSF Lifeline, because they provided the one-hundred-and-eighty days written notice pursuant to our existing contract, takes them until, I want to say it's March fourteenth. We will work with them to try and extend that if we can a little bit, but that extension will come through Elite, the person buying them, not them. What is in the packets this evening is part of the contract that we have with Lifeline. They cannot assign our contract to Lifeline to any other company without our consent, and that's the agreement that's in the packet. It's our consent to allow them to sign our contract with OSF to this other ambulance company so they can continue to provide the services at least until March fourteenth, so that we don't have an instant lack of ambulances. I would ask that you forward that to city council for next week, based upon what happens this week, talking to Elite, I may ask you to table it at that time or to act upon it, but it kind of depends on where our conversations go with Elite to see whether or not they're willing to extend that March fourteenth date a little bit to give us a little more time to get our ducks in a row and go out and find alternative services. One thing I can tell you is we will consider, we have talked about, you know, the option of bringing ambulance companies in-house with the city of Belvedere. While we consider that, that will likely not be a recommendation, simply because we'd have to hire so many firefighter paramedics to get it done, it would not be financially feasible in the short term or the long term, so. I knew that was going to be a question somebody was going to ask me, so I wanted to throw that out there, but to run the ambulance service, twelve more firefighters, Sean?
That's exactly what it would be.
So that, unless we can figure something else out, or there's nothing else that's financially feasible, that one is a very, very expensive option.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So does this affect the Lifeline helicopter? Does Elite, is Elite going to be doing the helicopter?
No, that's a complete independent service.
That's different? Okay.
Alderwoman Mohal?
Thank you, Mayor. So until, as long as we are able to transfer the agreement to Elite, everything in the agreement will be the same until March fourteenth, and then everything will be?
That's correct. Well, we'll. That is correct.
Yeah, and it may be forty-five days beyond that March fourteenth date. It may be, hopefully, it may be the end of April, April thirtieth, but we'll see. It's pretty premature. Actually, we had just been notified about it and just met with them, so you're hearing about as much as we are, but that is correct. That's the assumption. Thank you. Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, are you going to discuss the differences in cost to the customers for like an ambulance ride, you know, between them and Lifeline and those types of things? Because, you know, I have had some complaints about high costs of short rides from, you know, a couple blocks to, just to the Belvedere Hospital, you know, from people that say that they charge quite a bit now, so is that going to be discussed?
Well, I will tell you this, that, you know, it is premature. We certainly don't even know exactly what, you know, how this is going to change until we have a chance to move forward with it and explore our options as well. So I agree, I know there's been some discussions that we have had and that I have had with other individuals. Obviously, that's a huge concern. It's a concern to us. We want to be able to provide a service as, you know, cost-effective as we can, as efficient as we can, and with our life-saving and our ambulatory care to our citizens as possible, so, but with that being said, you know, the picture will get painted a lot clearer as we go forward, and certainly as we know more about it, we'll be able to explain it. Right now, they are going to, they are asking for us to assign this, at least bring it to the council for a vote next meeting to assign this, their contract. Is that correct?
They do need us to assign it.
And after that, we'll see how it plays out.
As far as the cost goes, depending on which option we kind of go with down the road with the chief's recommendation, we may control the rates ourselves. It depends on how we finance it with the company. I will say this too, though, if you're hearing excessive billing from OSF Lifeline, we need to know about that because they're locked into their rates, and they're essentially the, whatever the insurance company will pay or the Medicare rate. I do know there's another ambulance company that provides services on a non-emergent basis where it's a nine-one-one call, but from facility to facility, they have very high rates, but that has nothing to do with Lifeline, nothing to do with us. That's completely independent. But as far as a nine-one-one call, they're locked in by contract to what they can charge, and frankly, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money in the nine-one-one world.
And I guess to clarify my comments, that has been from haulers outside of Lifeline, so that's been, so, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, I mean, you're correct, that has been discussion, there has been discussion about that, but that has not been with who we contract out, that has been another provider, so, okay? Alderwoman Mohal, I saw you had your hand up. Okay, all right, so with that being said, is there anybody else? Any other questions?
After we had talked to a few more people, we'll get back as far as a projected course of action, and I'll let you know Monday night whether or not we should approve this next Monday night or table it.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to go ahead and assign that consent assignment regarding OSF's request and their notification, motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Snow. Any other questions regarding the motion and second on the table? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item B, Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twenty, a resolution recognizing the importance of broadband in rural areas throughout the United States and the critical need to invest in broadband expansion, and that resolution is, I will go ahead and read it, I guess, whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic led to an increase in remote work and digital communication among all Americans, and whereas, as a result of COVID-nineteen pandemic, many businesses, schools, government agencies, and organizations devised remote work strategies and invested in digital alternatives to replace in-person, paper-based methods of education and doing business, and whereas since the COVID-nineteen pandemic has brought challenges to rural community businesses struggling to stay afloat, children accessing virtual schools from remote and other digitally underserved locations, and individuals seeking to access health care as rural hospitals have closed, broadband remains critically essential to rural communities, and whereas technology is transforming the agricultural industry and changing the way form, excuse me, farms operate, and such advances are largely dependent on maintaining strong internet connectivity in rural communities, and whereas innovation on farms and in other rural settings is severely hampered if these locations lack access to robust broadband, and whereas broadband disparities continue to exist between rural and urban communities despite the growth remote, despite the growth remote work and digital communications have achieved in the past. digital communications have achieved in the past two years. And whereas, consistent internet connectivity is essential for farmers, and a gap currently persists among rural and urban communities with respect to delivering high-speed and reliable broadband to all Americans. And whereas, high-quality internet access is essential for Americans to work, learn, communicate with one another. And it is therefore important that broadband access in underserved communities be improved and maintained. And whereas, approximately 60% of broadband capacity is used by large providers of content streaming services and rural broadband providers have difficulty in raising prices to cover the costs associated with this ever-growing demand. And whereas, one of the most vital needs of our country is modern and durable infrastructure, which includes strong and robust broadband. So that's what that resolution says. If I could get a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any other questions regarding that? I think Alderman Snow.
Out of curiosity, what does this resolution do for us or the community as far as leave us open for funding or anything like that?
Well, I think for all the things that were said, and that's why I wanted to read that at this meeting, for all the reasons that was stated in that resolution, I think the future goes towards improving broadband services throughout, you know, even throughout the city. We see Frontier with fiber now burying, covering the community and competing with Comcast. And I think what they're looking at is being prepared for in the future. If, you know, a lot of people may go back to work, I don't know, a lot of them may not. I think the trend happens to be maybe 50/50. I know some organizations and businesses that I've talked to, what have you, they feel that, you know, some of the work from home is going to be, you know, perhaps the way they're going to. There's other businesses that still own bricks and mortars. In Chicago, for instance, they have a high price of rent. And some of their employees, they feel are better served to come back to the workforce. So it does set us up. Basically, the resolution was brought forward so that we would recognize that as a community for all those things. That answers your question.
We're part of a broadband coalition in several counties, including, I believe, Whiteside County, Ogle County, Winnebago Boone, and municipalities that are in. I might be wrong on one of those counties. But anyway, they're looking for grant funding. So most municipalities and the counties are putting together resolutions like that in support of that. So we have a big voice to ask for money for this.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Freeman, I didn't see you.
No, that's okay. So this doesn't really have anything to do with what Pam's doing with growth dimensions?
A lot of the a lot of the business opportunity, when they look at where they're going to locate, they look at broadband services, obviously. So, you know, it is, what do they say? If you have broadband services, you control your destiny for being able to court businesses for, you know, reasons that we had discussed here this evening. So, yeah, in a way, it does. It goes hand in hand with opportunity. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And we have item C, Resolution 2022-21, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and clerk to attest a collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Sergeants 2022 through 2026. I have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions regarding that, that you have with you, have on your desk here this evening? I know we had talked about this leading up to tonight. So if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them. Otherwise, seeing none, hearing none? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And we have item D, lastly, Resolution, excuse me, 2022-22, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the clerk to attest a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1569, AFL-CIO-CLC through 2022 through 2026. Could I have a motion by Alderman Flurry, motion second, excuse me, second by Alderman Snow? Any questions regarding that resolution before you tonight?
Mr. Mayor, this is an FYI. There's a there's a draft copy in your packets for consideration tonight. The final copy you see next Monday night might differ, will differ slightly. We have since found some typos and some pagination issues which will be fixed. They're being worked on today. And there might be a slight change in implementation dates of the new company officer position. That might be October 1 instead of November 1. And I'm pushing for November 1 to give the clerk's office more time to get those protocols put in place for payroll. So you might see slight changes in it for next Monday night. And if there are any, I'll draw your attention to it.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So this was ultimately agreed on without mediation?
Mediation?
Mediation.
No, mediation happened.
No, we did. We did have mediation. And we were able to come to terms without really any more expense on behalf of the city for the taxpayers. What they had wanted, it could have some expense, but with scheduling for a birthday regarding an added day off, it shouldn't have any impact on our budget or any of our any of our money.
Good. So we avoided arbitration?
We avoided arbitration.
We did. Yep, we did. It was worth it. So thank you very much. I appreciate your input and support. Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Do we have to have a supermajority for that vote, for that? Okay, good, because I'm not here.
So thank you, because that would be a nice way to put people on notice. Thank you. Regarding numbers, thank you. All right, hearing any, nothing else? Anybody else have anything? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much. And could I get a motion? There, we have nothing else on the agenda. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman, Alderman Flurry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, we adjourned at 6:57 PM. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.